All right, it's a little after 6:30 and we're going to start the first of FY17 budget discussion for RSU22. I'd like to start today with some introductions. Appreciate you folks from the town coming. We have Cindy, sorry, I'm sorry Cindy. I remembered your first name because I'm Cindy Mitchell. Cindy Grant, Angus Jennings, and Dennis Marvell, thank you. We really appreciate it when you folks from the pens come and work with us. You want to introduce the board members or do you want to have the ministers also introduce themselves?
Yes.
Evil Genes, Assistant to General Business.
Cindy Mitchell, Board Member, Hampden.
Mark Lyons, Superpland.
Frank Ford, Department of Labor, Department of Budget Committee.
Marvell, Department of Education.
Pete Miller, Board Member, Newburgh, on the Budget Committee.
Eric Carter, Board Member from Frankfurt, Budget Committee.
Doc Herring, Board Member from Winterport, not on the Budget Committee.
Amanda Seidel, Board Member from Hampden, not on the Budget Committee.
Jason Sharp, Board Member from Hampden, not on the Budget Committee.
Do you want to start, Regan?
I'm Regan Nichols, Principal at Reed's Park Elementary School.
I'm Lee Larson, Principal at Hampden Academy.
Christine Moon, Principal at Weatherby School.
I'm Dawn Moore, Principal at Smith's School in Winterport.
I'm Ruth Lyons, GT Coordinator.
I'm Lynn Wells, Director of Special Services.
I'm Mary Ellen Seymour, Assistant Director of Special Services.
I'm Kristen Briggs, I'm the Principal at the McGrath School.
I'm Mary Giard, I'm the Curriculum Director.
I'm Brittany Layden, the Health and Wellness Coordinator.
I'm Mr. Athlete Director, Ian McCadman.
Nate Savage, Technology Director.
Nick Raymond, Assistant Principal, Ian McCadman.
Wally, you have a seat up here at the Board Table.
Wally, President, Board Member for Hampden, not on the Budget Committee. And I'm working right now, so I'm going to stay in the back.
Multitasking, okay, and then you have.
Clyde Matt, Matt's here.
Hey, Matt's here, I'm the Principal at the Beazie Community School.
And his lovely wife.
There's somebody else. All right, thanks everyone, and thank you all for coming out of the Health and Wellness School Day to help us work our way through this budget. So the first thing I'm going to do is for the Budget Committee, and hang on, I'm going to use for Wally when he's not working, we have a letter from Philip Petula from the town of Hampden that I'm, Winterport, that I'm sorry, well, that I will share with you for your consideration in the budget deliberations. And this will become part of the minutes for the meeting, and you need to read that just incorporated in the minutes. This is like kind of incorporated in the minutes. Read, want to read it? Sure. Yeah, yeah. We have what you have. It was just.
Okay, so now we have.
So I'm going to read this in, so it's in a minute. And this was sent to Niles' partner or Chair who was disappointed to get me here tonight. Dear Niles, often what is lost in discussions surrounding monetary support for education and remuneration of those individuals providing those services are the economic demographics and viability of the communities paying them. Comparison to other school districts do not serve any useful purpose unless those communities are identical and make up to the four towns served by RSU22. Much has been made about postings on Facebook and testimony by individual teachers at school board meetings pertaining to how poorly paid our teachers are compared to communities such as Bangor, rural Old Town, and Herman, in my opinion, an apples-to-oranges comparison. I would like to share with you and the Board Members information pertaining to my community of Winterport in order for you to understand the inequities of those comparisons. Winterport's tax base is 86.5% residential and 13.443% commercial. Based on information provided on citneydata.com, the median household income in 2013 was $43,761. When researching data, different sites offer different results. USA.com said $50,952, the ACS Census says $56,803, with the estimated per capita income of $28,553. Our population, as of the 2010 Census, is 3,757, an increase of 155 people since the 2000 Census, with an estimated 1,600 households, an increase of 221 over that same period. Out of that population, approximately 18% of our residents are 60 years of age and older on fixed incomes. Comparing us to the aforementioned communities to justify a large increase in pay for our teachers is by any measure unfair. I had requested and received from the school administration to break down of the teacher's salaries and health benefits for 2014-15, and would offer the following statistical breakdown of those numbers, which I then had verified by Evil Genes. We had 84.05 teachers paid a total salary amount of $3,751,572. 89.74 teachers paid a total salary of $4,591,283, with 19.75 teachers paid a total salary of $1,109,994. Adding this all together, we paid 193.54 teachers $9,452,849,000 for that year. This equates to an average of $48,841,000 per teacher for 184 contracted days or 9.5 months of work. That number then breaks down to an average monthly salary of $5,141.25, and when extrapolated over a 12-month year for comparison to the private sector, results in a yearly salary of $61,694.95. Not included in this breakdown was an additional $65,203 in merit pay that some teachers in the system receive. When you then consider health benefits totaling $2,440,365, and state-paid retirement benefits, numbers that I do not have but are paid through our tax dollars, it is hard to imagine that the total monetary package for our teachers would be considered anything close to poorly paid. When any public entity reaches the point of remuneration far above the average household in the communities they serve, they face the real prospect of alienating that population, along with the possibility of an ensuing backlash, backlash against that institution. We are observing that on a national scale, and I would hate to see that take hold on the local level. In these continuing hard economic times, I ask that the Board carefully considers the effect their upcoming decisions on the school budget have had on each, have on each community within RSU22. A school cost make up approximately 60, 77, 60 to 77% of the property taxes paid by the residents of said communities. Respectfully yours, Philip Petula, Town Mayor. So the next thing I want to pass around is something that's pretty awesome about our elementary schools. It's an article online that highlights 14th Street School, Mary Snow School, George Weatherby School, Abraham Lincoln School, Herman and Beazie, and of these schools, it looks like we were tied for second in the top five with Mary Snow School. Yay, Weatherby, that's great, thanks for sharing this, Evil.
What you're seeing is the five highest rated elementary schools in the greater Bangor area, and that I'd like to recognize the Weatherby Elementary School is being tied for second in the greater Bangor area. Congratulations, Tina, on that.
I think that sometimes we forget too, and I emailed you the dispatch last night, that I want to look at the graph because clearly I have to put that right in my table.
No problem, no, that's good.
Okay, I think that we're ready to start into the review of the budget. This is the first time the Board has seen the budget, so we'll go through it slowly and carefully. And Evil, I think if you hand it over to the members, if you go through it in stages and then open it up with questions from the Board as we go through it, so there's a lot to read through. So I'm going to start with.
The question we had now, that picture is our state championship basketball team this year. And that for a second season this year.
It's a great choice for the front page. So to set the stage for why this budget is what it is, we're going to start with our strategic goals of the Board. The administration takes those strategic goals and goes back and works their budgets with this as a foundation for how we run the district and what's important for us. And Goal Number One, Student Learnings and Outcomes, has five vision goals highlighted here. Development, student learning and outcomes to improve individual students' engagement and achievement. The vision goals are around, I hate reading PowerPoints, so I'm going to shorten each one. You have the chance to read it here yourself, but the vision goals are to develop an infinite proficiency-based curriculum, make sure we have a system of learning experiences that support the proficiency-based approach, that utilize instructional practices within the framework of Maricopa. Create and utilize student education experiences in the larger community and implement effective supervision. We have a lot of conversations in this space in our Education Committee, in a lot of places, and the core of this is our work in proficiency and creating engaging and rich student educational experiences. The second part of our strategic plan is development, stewardship and development of resources. And key to stewardship and development of resources is within the vision goal A, to develop succession planning to support administrative leadership training. We are coming onto a period of high level of retirement of teachers who've been here a long time, as well as our school leadership and our administrative leadership. We actually do conduct funnel, because it's faculty, so we have a really good picture of why people are leaving that helps us look at what, how can we support retention. To improve, it's vision goal B is to improve fiscal resources to sustain and increase educational opportunities. We continue to look at ways to expand the use of the Performing Arts Center. And at this point, we're in a very plan, planning stage of Weatherby and McGrath. This is the plan, this is the plan, this is planning to know what it would take should we have opportunities down the road. Vision goal C, to expand and minimize use of technology resources for the purposes of improving education and communication outreach in communities within and beyond our school. Consider having secondary students, teachers to help out by create web sites and marketing, and also like Mary would incorporate using virtual high school and things like that. Goal Three is to have governments and policies, provide effective governance to achieve our mission, vision, goal, to alter the provisions of educational provisions and policies, input negotiations and government. Obviously, the main issue here for us right now is to finalize a teacher contract for actually this year and then what we hope are the next two. Communications and Public Relations, to communicate with and engage residents of Hampden, Newburgh, Winterport, and Frankfurt. This is important to help the community understand the education mandates we are working within. You'll see a lot of that tonight in the special education area in this budget. Evaluate, align, and execute RSU22 missions and visions statement. Maintain community involvement and provide opportunity for feedback, questions, and answers. Maintain and expand various partnerships to support initiatives for professional development, excellence in education. We're going to see the working world classes come here. Research, and then Goal Five is research and development, discover and create new knowledge by identifying and measuring the development of value and the product across the community. And this is demonstrated in our just outstanding growing partnership with Alton, particularly our education partnerships, and what we've been doing with adult education partnerships. So now we get into the meat of it. The budget that we're proposing tonight has a gross increase of 1.9% and a local budget increase of 3.3%. This is a budget that was built from a starting point of $177,000 reduction in our general focus aid for education. And I think this is where Evil gets to do all the hard stuff.
We're going to review some demographics, but I do want to note that this budget is based on, it's going to be viewed on a strategic plan, or even in here, is in regards to strategic plan that I'll go over the next one to five years. Project, we just did a study in 2016, completed by planning decisions. No tuition students are in this enrollment, these enrollment numbers, but you can see that it was steady. I would say it's hard to deject for 10 years, I say this study's really, I would say five years. It's a best fit model, and so you can see that our moments are fairly steady, they grow, they got a little bit, but I see it staying at a moment for the next five, five to six years. You can see it broke down, nine through 12. The next demographic page is what do I get? You can see it broke down as global, also state reimbursed. When I say state reimbursed, money comes from the Department of Education through the budget, the revenue, and it's, the market is an expenditure. So the state provides about $3.4 million state money to be basically a new high school and a state elementary school, a lot of project. The others are local, local monies, some of them are through the quality school construction bonds and repairs to our, to our school throughout the district. So you can see what our debt looks like on a year-to-year basis.
Evil, so Smith comes out the rules.
And so does your state money. So your state money will come off the rules, and Smith will come on. And before this, Reed's Brook, 1994, 2014, so Reed's Brook's paid off. And the wagon was 2013, and that's paid off too. But the wagon and Reed's Brook and those schools are paid off right now. State per pupil costs, as a matter of fact, our administrative team had an interesting topic discussion today. These guys are our per pupil costs. As you can see, our per pupil cost, approximately $1,000 below the state average, just when you're 14. Usually, customarily, we've been either at the state average or a little bit below the state average, you know? But the conversation today is, is $1,000, does that really want to be? Is that, does that really, really want to be, $1,000 below the state average? I think, I think our expenditures are frugal, however, on top of 2,300 students, $1,000 flip, and serious conversation with that. Any questions on that? Breakdown by category and expenditure costs in regards to our budget. Now, these slides are all Department of Education.
I was just looking at the graph, so just year 14 is the last year that we have on here. Just year 14, we ran.
This is the latest information I've found on the DOE website.
Did you?
This came out of DOE website.
All of these are from the DOE website.
What is, what was our per student, our per pupil cost in just year 15?
That, what they do is they take the transportation out, they take the debt out. I would say it'd be close to that, pretty close. I don't have that much. And I always, what I always do though, I think it's, I think it's prudent, is that we always take the numbers from the DOE website because apples to apples get everybody.
And generally, we get that.
We probably won't get the 15 figures until probably later on in the years. They're very slow with these statistics. But that's, if you put about that, like, apples to apples, what can you get?
Oh, sure, yeah. No, I was just wondering, you know, we have been stable, see a slight uptick in FY13, but then it comes back down to a year that our level's more consistent with '08, '09, '10, '11, with this report, and I was just wondering if we'd seen an uptick or stayed the same in '15. But it's typically.
And can I answer this question, if this will run from July 1 to June 30?
Thanks, I'm more of a calendar guy, so.
As can we.
Just a clarification, I think I understood you correctly that that excludes debt service and transportation?
Correct, because it skews.
No, right. But you still consider that apples to apples where our debt service is so much higher than the state average?
No, it's not included because our debt service would skew it. So debt service is not included with the per pupil cost. Transportation's not included with the per pupil cost because areas that are very rural, such as SAD number three, their transportation costs would be significantly higher. So that's why they take those figures right out. Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So the answer that the things where we are all measured the same, we are below the state average?
Correct. And I think that's, if you use those figures, if you would use those figures, that would be an apples-to-apples figure because I don't know what the debt is for SAD 3, let's say, or the transportation cost for SAD 3.
But we do know it at the state level, or according to this.
Yeah, but I don't know the other school systems. Breakdown percentages between our 2012 and the state. And you can see, basically, these are the costs, the cost articles that you vote for in the warrant articles, regular instruction. We spend, for example, we spend 35.2% regular instruction, the state gave about 40.8%. Special ed, 30.9 here, 30.5. Career technology education, that's our book school, region three, three or four. It's our book school. Other instruction is athletics, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Student staff support, and help me out if I don't want to forget something. Student staff support is guidance, library, nursing, curriculum, and IT. Those are the five areas, the five centers that we pay for student staff support. System administration is the central office, which would include the super tent office and the business office. School administration is all related to the principal's office and their staff support. Transportation is our contract with SCER. Facilities is all the operations and maintenance, including our custodial expenditures, heating, oil, utilities, everything associated with facilities, maintenance. And here's, and here's a good reason why they take the per pupil cost out for the state. Our debt service is 14.8%, and the state is six. All other is our school nutrition program, goes out, lunch program and breakfast program is self-sustaining, so there's no support for the general operating budget for our school lunch program. Okay?
Do we have those percentages if you take up the 3.4 million to the state quota? Since our debt service is so much higher than everybody else's.
I do not add that. I do not add that. Okay, and this bit of cost, as compared to other school systems, you can see that we compare, we compare our administrative costs to other school systems because this question has been asked by the Board. And so that you can see, the state average is total of system and school administration, 8.25 and RSU 22 plus 7.3. That's a pretty common, that's been a factor for a long time. That's pretty, that's pretty common. Questions on this page?
I think it's the same answer, but we don't have these for the.
I will tell you, Jason, I would say that customarily, even before H8 came in, we have been below the state average.
I'm just trying to get an idea, when I look at some of these cuts, just kind of put it on perspective.
Well, on, you can see that on the 279, which is our state printout, it will show, it will show that our school administration is below what is recommended by half a position. And then when EPS was formulated, they, they had in the late 90s that your system administration is below what administrator, the central office staff is below by half a person. So that is used in the central program of services, we compare that to our administrative costs.
Right, but, well, I can take this up later, I guess, when you look at our system administrative costs, so we actually take the EPS model and you actually put it for students quite a bit above what would be needed for what we have here when we look at the amount of money that's there, and then really looking at the percentages that we have here, take up the 3.4 million, and bring my piece of paper with it, but our percentage is quite a bit higher. And the reason I'm asking these questions is because when we were asked to feature pay, we're asked to compare ourselves to a couple of other districts, and you notice that the principals were paid less than here, in some of these other districts, while our administrators or our central office were quite a bit above. And so I was just trying, just trying to, you know, once again, we haven't gone through the whole thing, but just trying, as we go through the deep context, we're cutting some programs, and I'm just trying to figure out where we are as far as our system administration compares to some of these other places, so. Thank you.
But I think when I said of, I don't, we'll talk about that because I think you got to look at the, you got to look at, like, take a look at the template, the model that was sent to you in the Board Update, and that's, that's the model to look at for both school and system administration. Okay, this is a busy, this is a busy slide. So let's go through this line by line. What this is, this is our budget, and that on the first line you can see, on the left column is closer to 216, what we're proposing and what the variance is. Okay, both on expenditure side and both on the revenue side. So we're looking at, on the expenditure side, a $583,000 increase of 1.9%. This is going to be confusing a little bit, so I want to go over there and I'm going to read right out of the blue. The state subsidy that was approved in early July 15, adopted by the district, well, the money received in July was not the money that we adopted in June because the state gave additional money for state figures. What we actually received is $184,467.09, which is about $255,000 above this figure. You take this number, this number here that we actually received in July, and you subtract it from this figure that we are in our proposed budget, it's $177,000 less money. Go over that one more time. We received an additional $255,000 state money from the legislature. Our fiscal year ends in June. We approve, the townspeople approve, $18191, but the state gave us $18446. So the actual figure, apples to apples, $18446, $18269, is a loss of about $177,000. That number before, though, was a loss of $325,000, and the state recently increased our state share by about $15,000. Is everyone all set with that?
State one.
State one.
State one.
Not RSU22.
No, it's state one. State one. Is that, is that clear? Because it can be confusing. So we have, it shows 78,000 of the good, however, we are $177,000 less than last year. Then we go over the state's decline reimbursement, which are students that are in our school system that are, I would say, called state ward students?
Yeah.
And that we receive or reimburse on a monthly basis for those students that we have in our district, and we are anticipating $20,000 less money for those students.
Why? Because of the group home or?
No, the group homes have actually increased, but a lot of those students. Um, no, the group homes have actually increased, but a lot of those students are going to, um, the streets or educational program without that, therefore we can't access any of the costs related to that.
Okay? So you can see, um, where there's total state share money, um, column right here adds up. Then, what would you need for local? What supports locally monies that, uh, that support the thirty million one hundred thirty two thousand dollar expenditure? And there's various items, um, that we have, we have rental fees, sometimes we rent this facility, um.
Ava, I'm sorry, you know, just, so when you look at the total state share line, where it comes across and you have that number of fifty eight thousand sixty seven dollars thirty four cents. But that's, that's not the actual change in state share, right?
That is correct.
Because it was actually the negative one hundred seventy seven and then the negative twenty thousand, so that number is actually negative one hundred ninety seven.
That is correct.
Oh, and I also want to ask, the state agency client reimbursement going down twenty thousand dollars. So you're saying that many of those, of the students are actually accessing educational services through streets? Is there still any cost to the district for students who are accessing through streets? Or I mean, are, are we experiencing a twenty thousand dollar loss in state funding without the current twenty thousand dollar expenditure going away from our budget?
Right, we're not extending any of that money, so that would mean, if they were, if they were going to school here, then we could access all of the special education services that they were receiving. But because they're getting their schooling in a different school, that school gets that money.
So it's sort of, we're losing the money, but it's sort of awash because we have less expenditure.
Right. We wouldn't have expenditures in the first place.
Right.
Right.
All set?
Maybe, I don't know.
Can I ask you a question? I'm, I'm with you up through the hundred and ninety thousand approximate variance, I get that. And I heard the reference that I'm not sharp on with the fifteen million through the DNR compromise last week or whatever it was coming out of Augusta.
Yes.
But is there a local share projection of that number factored in here anywhere?
Oh, yeah.
We just haven't made it that far through.
Okay.
We're working our way down.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, you can see various items on that we obtained some revenue to, um, to pay for our budget. You can see aid proceeds from our gains, the athletic participation fee, which the athletic committee has noted to wishes that they'd like to get rid of, but, um, it's still in there. The E rate money we received for some of our, um, high-end expenditures, the bonus expenditures, that is completely dwindled. That's federal, that's from the federal, um, that's federal money. Uh, but we still receive some reimbursement for our expenditures in, in that close categories. We have expense reimbursements, uh, for the VHS program. We have some money there, uh, for VHS.
All right, just a little after six thirty, and we're going to start the first, uh, FY seventeen budget discussion for RSU twenty two. I'd just start today with some introductions. Appreciate some folks from the town coming, we got, um, Cindy.
Great.
Sorry, I'm sorry Cindy, I remembered your first name, because I'm Cindy Mitchell. Cindy Brand, Angus Jennings, and Dennis Marvel, thank you, we really appreciate it when folks from the towns come and work with this. Do you want to introduce the board members or have the ministers also introduce themselves?
Yes. Emo Janice, Assistant Social General Business.
Cindy Mitchell, Board Member, Hampden.
Mark Long, Sir Lynam. Pete Miller, Board Member, Newburgh, on the Budget Committee.
Eric Carter, Board Member from Frankfurt, Budget Committee.
Doc Herring, Board Member from Winterport, not on the Budget Committee.
Amanda Seidel, um, Board Member from Hampden, not on the Budget Committee.
Jason Sharp, Board Member from Hampden, not on the Budget Committee.
Do you want to start, Regan, and I can?
I'm Regan Nichols, Principal at Reed's Park Elementary School.
I'm Lee Larson, Principal at Hampden Academy.
Christine Moon, Principal at Waddie School.
I'm Dawn Moore, Principal at Smith's School in Winterport.
I'm Ruth Lyons, GT Coordinator.
I'm Lynn Wells, Director of Special Services.
I'm Mary Ellen Seymour, Assistant Director of Special Services.
I'm Kristen Briggs, I'm the Principal of the McGrath School.
I'm Mary Giard, I'm the Curriculum Director.
I'm Brittany Layden, the Health and Wellness Coordinator.
I'm Mr. Athlete Director, Anna McCablin.
Nate Savage, Technology Director.
Nick Raymond, Assistant Principal, Anna McCablin.
And then we have some folks into that. Wally, you have a seat up here at the board table?
Uh, Wally, President, Board Member for, in Hampden, uh, not on the Budget Committee. I'm working right now, so I'm going to stay in the back.
Multitasking, and then we have.
My name is Matt, I'm the Principal of the Beazie Community School. And his lovely, and his lovely wife.
There's somebody else I could try to. All right, thanks everyone, and thank you all for coming out of that long school day to help us work our way through this budget. So the first thing I'm going to do is, uh, with Budget Committee and hanging on to one of these for Wally when he's not working, um, we have a letter from, uh, Philip Petula from the town of Hampden that I was going to, uh, Winterport, that I'm sorry, well, that I will share with you for your consideration in the budget deliberations. And this will become part of the minutes for the meeting, and you need to read it after that, just incorporate it in the minutes. If you'd like to read it or incorporate it. Read, want to read it? Sure. Yeah, yeah, uh, we have what you have. It was just. Um, so I'm going to read this in, so it's an announcement. And this was sent to Niles' partner or chair who was disappointed to get me here tonight. Dear Niles, often what is lost in discussions surrounding monetary support for education and remuneration of those individuals providing those services are the economic demographics and viability of the communities paying them. Comparison to other school districts do not serve any useful purpose unless those communities are identical and make up to the four towns served by RSU twenty two. Much has been made about postings on Facebook and testimony by individual teachers at school board meetings pertaining to how poorly paid our teachers are compared to communities such as Bangor, rural Old Town in Herman, in my opinion, an apples to oranges comparison. I would like to share with you and the board members information pertaining to my community of Winterport in order for you to understand the inequities of those comparisons. Winterport's tax base is eighty six point five percent residential and thirteen point forty four three percent commercial. Based on information provided on citi data dot com, the median household income in twenty thirteen was forty three thousand seven hundred sixty one dollars. When researching data, different sites offer different results. USA dot com said fifty thousand nine hundred fifty two, the ACS census says fifty six thousand eight hundred and three, with the estimated per capita income of twenty eight thousand five hundred and fifty one. Our population, as of the twenty ten census, is three thousand seven hundred and fifty seven, an increase of a hundred and fifty five people since the two thousand census, with an estimated one thousand six hundred households, an increase of two hundred and twenty one over that same period. Out of that population, approximately eighteen percent of our residents are sixty years of age and older on fixed incomes. Comparing us to the aforementioned communities to justify a large increase in pay for our teachers is by any measure unfair. I had requested and received from the school administration a breakdown of the teacher's salaries and health benefits for twenty fourteen fifteen, and would offer the following statistical breakdown of those numbers, which I then had verified by Emo Janice. We had eighty four point zero five teachers paid a total salary amount of three million seven hundred and fifty one thousand five hundred and seventy two dollars. Eighty nine point seven four teachers paid a total salary of four million five hundred and ninety one thousand two hundred and eighty three dollars, with nineteen point seven five teachers paid a total salary of one million one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and ninety four dollars. Adding this all together, we paid a hundred and ninety three point five four teachers, nine million four hundred and fifty two thousand eight hundred and forty nine thousand for that year. This equates to an average of forty eight thousand eight hundred and forty one dollars per teacher for a hundred and eighty four contracted days for nine point five months of work. That number then breaks down to an average monthly salary of five thousand one hundred and forty one dollars and twenty five cents. And when extrapolated over a twelve month year for comparison to the private sector, results in a yearly salary of sixty one thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars and ninety five cents. Not included in this breakdown was an additional sixty five thousand two hundred and three dollars in merit pay that some teachers in the system receive. When you then consider health benefits totaling two million four hundred and forty, two million four hundred and forty thousand three hundred and sixty five dollars and state-paid retirement benefits, numbers that I do not have but are paid through our tax dollars, it is hard to imagine that the total monetary package for our teachers would be considered anything close to poorly paid. When any public entity reaches the point of remuneration far above the average household in the communities they serve, they face the real prospect of alienating that population, along with the possibility of an ensuing backlash, backlash against that institution. We are observing that on a national scale, and I would hate to see that take hold on the local level. In these continuing hard economic times, I ask that the board carefully considers the effect their upcoming decisions on the school budget have had on each, have on each community within RSU twenty two, as school costs make up approximately sixty, seventy seven, sixty to seventy seven percent of the property taxes paid by the residents of said communities. Respectfully yours, Philip Petula, Town Manager. So the next thing I want to pass around is something that's pretty awesome about our elementary schools. It's an article online that highlights Fourteenth Street School, Mary Snow School, George Weatherby School, Abraham Lincoln School, Herman and Beazie, and of these schools, it looks like we were tied for second in the top five with Mary Snow School, Yay Weatherby. That's great, thanks for sharing this, Emo.
Look at, what you're seeing is the, uh, five highest rated elementary schools in the greater Bangor area and that, um, I'd like to recognize the way the elementary schools is being tied for second in the greater Bangor area. Congratulations, Tina, on that.
I think that sometimes we forget too, and I emailed you the dispatch last night that I want a little bit of a bra, because clearly that's a team effort, isn't it?
No problem, that's, that's good.
Okay, I think with that, we're ready to start into the review of the budget. This is the first time the board is seeing the budget, so we'll go through it slowly and carefully and, um, you know, I think, I'd like to hand it over to you two members if you go through it in stages and then open it up with questions from the board as we go through it, so I think there's a lot of need here. So I'm going to start with.
The point we have, that, that pictures our, uh, state championship unified basketball team this year. And now for a successful season this year.
It's a great choice for the front page. So, to set the stage for why this budget is what it is, we're going to start with our strategic goals of the board. The, the administration takes those strategic goals and goes back and works their budgets with the, this is the foundation for how we run the district and what's important for us. And goal number one, student learnings and outcomes, has five vision goals highlighted here. Development, um, student learning and outcomes to improve individual student engagement and achievement. The vision goals are around, uh, I'm, I have a reading PowerPoint, so I'm going to shorten each one. You have the chance to read it here yourself. But the vision goals are to develop, implement a proficiency-based curriculum, um, make sure we have a system of learning experiences that support the proficiency-based approach that aligns instructional practices, uh, within the framework of Martin's Law. Create and utilize student education experiences in the larger community and implement effective supervision. We have a lot of conversations in this space in our education committee around these places. And the core of this is our work in proficiency and creating engaging and stu-, um, engaging and rich student educational experiences. The second part of our strategic plan is development, uh, stewardship and development of resources. And the key to stewardship and development of resources is within the vision goal A, to develop succession plans to support administration leadership turnover. We are, um, coming on through a period of high level of, um, retirement of teachers who've been here a long time, as well as our school leadership and our administrative leadership. Um, we actually do conduct funnel, um, as it's a faculty, so we have a really good picture of why people are leaving that helps us look at what, how can we support retention? To improve, uh, it's vision goal B is to improve fiscal resources to sustain and increase educational opportunities. We continue to look at ways to expand the use of the performing arts center. And at this point, we're in a very plan, planning stage of Weatherby and McGrath. This is the plan, this is the plan, this is planning to know what it would take should we have opportunities down the road. Vision goal C, to expand and minimize use of technology resources, which is the purpose of improving education and communication outreach with communities within and beyond our strategic plan. Consider having secondary students, which is how I create websites for marketing, and it's also, I think, Mary would incorporate, using Royal High School and things like that. Goal three is to have governance and policy, provide effective governance to achieve our mission, vision, goal to alter the provisions of educational provisions and policies with input, negotiations, and government. Um, obviously, the main issue here for us right now is to finalize the teacher contract for actually this year and then what we hope for the next two. Communications and public relations, to communicate with and engage residents of Hampden, Newburgh, Winterport, and Frankfurt. This is important to help the community understand the education mandates we're working within. You'll see a lot of that tonight in the special education area in this budget. Evaluate, align, and execute our twenty two missions and vision statement. Maintain community involvement and provide opportunities for feedback, questions, and answers. Maintain and expand various partnerships to support initiatives for professional development, excellence in education. And when you see that working with our classes come here, research, and then goal five is research and development. Discover and create new knowledge by identifying and measuring the development of value in the product or process of research. And this is demonstrated in our just outstanding and growing partnership with, uh, all the, probably our education partnerships and of what we've been doing with adult education partnerships. So now we get into the meat of it. The budget that we're proposing tonight has a gross increase of one point nine percent and a local budget increase of three point three percent. This is a budget that was built from a starting point of a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars reduction in our general purpose aid for education. And I think this is where Emo gets to do all the hard stuff.
Well, we're going to review some demographics, but I do want to note that this budget is based on, it's going to be reviewed on a strategic plan. What we're going to do here is, um, is in the, uh, strategic plan, what, uh, what is after the next one to five years. Project, we just did a study, um, in two thousand sixteen, completed by, um, planning decisions. Uh, no tuition students are in, uh, this enrollment, these enrollment numbers. But you can see that, um, it was steady. I would say it's hard to deject for ten years, I say this, this study's really, I would say five years. It's a best fit model, and so, um, you can see that our moments are fairly steady, they grow, they, they got a little bit, but I, I see, um, steady in moments. But I see it steady in the next five, five to six years. You can see it broke down by two, twelve. The next demographic page is what we are at. You can see the program is local, also state reimbursed. When I say state reimbursed, money comes from the Department of Education through the budget, the revenue, and it's, the market is an expenditure. So the state divides about three point four million dollars of state money to be basically a new high school and then a Smith Elementary School, which is a bottom project. The others are local, local monies. Some of them are to the quality school construction bonds and repairs to our, to our school throughout the district. So you can see what our debt looks like on a year-to-year basis.
So you will see Smith comes off the rolls.
And so does your state money. So your state money will come off the rolls, the Smith will come off. And before this, Reed's Brook, nineteen ninety-four, two thousand and fourteen, so Reed's Brook stayed off. And Wagner was two thousand and thirteen, and that's paid off too. So Wagner and Reed's Brook schools are paid off right now. State per pupil cost. As a matter of fact, our administrative team had an interesting topic discussion today. These guys have our per pupil cost. As you can see, our per pupil cost approximately a thousand dollars below the state average, this year, fourteen. Usually customarily, you've been either at the state average or a little bit below the state average, you know? But the conversation today is, is a thousand dollars, does that really want to be? Is that, is that really what we really want to be, a thousand dollars below the state average? I think, I think our expenditures are frugal. However, we're talking about twenty-three hundred students, a thousand dollars a flip, and serious conversation with that. Any questions on that? Breakdown by category and expenditure costs in regards to our budget. Now, these slides are all Department of Education.
I was just looking at the graph. So just through year fourteen is the last year that we have on here. Just year fourteen ran.
This is the latest information that's on the DOE website.
This came out of DOE website, not out of here?
All of these are from the DOE website.
What is, what was our per student, our per pupil cost in this year?
That, what they do is they give transportation, they get that out. I would say it'd be close to that. Pretty close. I don't have that number. And I always, what I always do though, I think it's prudent, is that we always take the numbers from the DOE website. Because apples to apples, get every money, the same way.
And generally, we get that million?
We probably won't get the fifteen figures until probably later on in the year. They're very slow with these statistics. But that's, if you put about that, it'll be apples to apples from four to fifteen.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, we have been stable, see a slight uptick in July thirteen, but then it comes back down to a year that our level is more consistent with oh-eight, oh-nine, ten, eleven, which is the reports. And I was just wondering if we've seen an uptick or stayed the same in fifteen. But if we haven't had that number.
In fifteen, we're at.
Can I answer the first question? If this four-year runs from July one to June thirty?
Thanks. I'm more of a calendar guy, so.
As can be confused.
Just a clarification. I think I understood you correctly that that excludes debt service and transportation?
Correct, because it skews.
No, right. But you still consider that apples to apples where our debt service is so much higher than the state average?
No, it's not included because our debt service would skew. So debt service is not included with per pupil cost. Transportation is not included with per pupil cost because areas that are very rural, such as SAD number three, their transportation cost would be significantly higher. So that's why they take those figures right out. Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So the answer that the things where we are all measured the same, we are below the state average?
Correct. And I think that's, if you use those figures, if you would use those figures, that would be an apples to apples figure. Because I don't know what the debt is for SAD three, let's say, or the transportation cost for SAD three.
But we do know it at the state level, or according to this.
Yeah, but I don't know the other school systems though. Breakdown percentages between RSU twenty-two and the state. And you can see, basically, these are the costs, the cost articles that you go for in the warrant articles, regular instruction. We spend, for example, we spend thirty-five point two percent regular instruction, the state gave about forty point eight percent. Special ed, fifteen point nine here, fifteen point five. Career technology education, that's our book school, region three. It's a three or four. It's our book school. Other instruction is athletics, co-curricular, and extracurricular activities. Student staff support, and help me out if I don't want to forget something. Student staff support is guidance, library, nursing. Curriculum and IT. Those are the five areas, the five centers that we pay for student staff support. System administration is the central office, which would include the superintendent's office and the business office. School administration is all related to the principal's office and their staff support. Transportation is our contract with SCER. Facilities is all the operations and maintenance, including our custodial expenditures, heating, oil, utilities, everything associated with facilities, maintenance. And here's, and here's a good reason why they take the per pupil cost out of the state. Our debt service is fourteen point eight percent, and the state is six. All other is our school nutrition program, plus our lunch program and breakfast program, it's self-sustaining. So there's no support for the general operating budget for our school lunch program.
Do we have those percentages if you take out the three point four million from the state quota? Since our debt service is so much higher than everybody else's, we take out the three point four million?
I do not have that. Okay, administrative costs as compared to other school systems. You can see that we compare our administrative costs to other school systems because this question has been asked by the board. And so that you can see, the state average is below the system school administration, eighty point two five, and RSU twenty-two, seventy point three. That's a pretty common, that's been a factor for a long time. That's pretty, that's pretty common. Questions on this page?
I think it'd be the same answer, but we don't have these with, out of debt service.
I will tell you Jason, I would say that customarily, even before H eight came in, we have been below the state average.
I'm just trying to get an idea. When I look at some of these cuts.
Well, you can see that on the two seventy-nine, which is our state printout, it will show, it will show that our school administration is below what is recommended by half the position. And then when EPS was formulated, they had factored in the late nineties that your system administration is below what administrator, the central office staff is below by half a person. So that is used for the central program services. We compare that to our administrative costs.
Right, but, well, they take this up later, I guess. When you look at our system administrative costs of, we actually take the EPS model and actually put it for students, we're quite a bit above what would be needed for what we have here. When we look at the amount of money that's there and then really looking at the percentages that we have here. Take out the three point four million, and bring my piece of paper with it, but our percentage is quite a bit higher. And the reason I'm asking these questions is because when we were asked to feature, hey, we're asking to compare ourselves to a couple of other districts. And we noticed that the principals were paid less than here in some of these other districts, but our administrators or our central office were quite a bit above. And so I'm just trying, I'm just trying to, you know, once again, we haven't gone through the whole thing. I'm just trying, as we go through the deeper context, we're cutting some programs. And I'm just trying to figure out where we are as far as our system administration compared to some of these other places, so. Thank you.
But I think when I sent out, I don't, we'll talk about that because I think you got to look at the, you got to look at, like, take a look at the template. The model that was sent to you in the board update. And that's, that's the model that you look at for both school and system administration. Okay, this is a busy, this is a busy slide. So, let's go through this line by line. What this is, this is our budget. And that, on the first line, you can see, on the left column is the proposed approval sixteen, what we're proposing and what the variance is. Okay? Both on the expenditure side and both on the revenue side. So, we're looking at, on the expenditure side, a five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar increase of about one point nine percent. This is going to be confusing a little bit, so I want to go over it and I'm going to read it right out of the blue lines. The state subsidy subsidy that was approved in early July fifteen, adopted by the district, well, the money received in July was not the money that we adopted in June because the state gave additional money for state figures. What we actually received is eighteen million four four six seven oh nine. We do not, which is about two hundred and fifty-five thousand above this figure. If you take this number, this number here that we actually received in July, and you subtract it from this figure that we are in our proposed budget, it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars less money. Go over that one more time. We received an additional two hundred and fifty-five thousand state money from the legislature. Our fiscal year ends in June. We approve, the townspeople approve eighteen million one ninety-one. But the state gave us eighteen million four forty-six. So the actual figure, apples to apples, eighteen million four forty-six, eighteen million two sixty-nine, is a loss of about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. That number before though, was a loss of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And the state recently increased our state share by about fifteen million dollars. Is everyone all set with that?
State one.
State one.
Nineteen, RSU twenty-two.
No, it's state one. State one. Is that, is that clear? Because it can be confusing. So we have, it shows seventy-eight thousand good, however, we are a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars less than last year. Then we go over the state's decline reimbursement, which are students that are in our school system that are, how would you say, called state award students?
Yeah.
And that we receive or we're reimbursed on a monthly basis for those students that we have in our district. And we earned this day twenty thousand dollars less money for those students.
Why? Because they're going to group home? No, the group homes have actually increased, but a lot of those students are going to the streets or educational program in Belfast. Therefore, we can't access any of the costs related to that.
Okay, so you can see where there's total state share money. Column here. Adds up. Then, what would you need for local? What supports locally, monies that, that support the thirty million one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar expenditure? And there's various items that we have. We have rental fees, sometimes we rent this facility.
Hey, I'm sorry, I'm just, so when you look at the total state share line, where it comes across, and you have that number of fifty-eight thousand sixty-seven dollars thirty-four cents. But that's, that's not the actual change in state share, right?
That is correct.
Because it was actually the negative one hundred and seventy-seven, and then the negative twenty thousand. So that number is actually negative one hundred and ninety-seven.
That is correct.
Oh, and I also want to ask, the state decline reimbursement going down twenty thousand dollars. So you're saying that many of those, of the students are actually accessing educational services through streets? Is there still any cost to the district for students who are accessing through streets? Or I mean, are we experiencing a twenty thousand dollar loss in state funding without the current twenty thousand dollar expenditure going away from our budget?
Right, we're not spending any of that money, so that would mean, if they were, if they were going to school here, then we could access all of the special education services that they were receiving. But because they're getting their schooling in a different school, that school.
Gets that money. So it's sort of, we're losing the money, but it's sort of a wash because we have less expenditure?
Right. We wouldn't have the expenditures in the first place.
Right.
Right.
All set?
Maybe, I don't know.
Can I ask you a question? I'm, I'm with you up through the hundred and ninety thousand approximate variance, I get that. And I heard the reference that I'm not sharp on with the fifteen million through the DNR compromise last week or whatever it was coming out of Augusta.
Yes.
But is there a local share projection of that number factored in here anywhere?
Yeah. We just haven't made it that far through.
Okay.
We're working our way down.
Thank you.
Okay, so you can see various items on that we are paying some revenue to, to pay for our budget. You can see aid receipts from our gains, the athletic participation fee, which the athletic committee has noted to wishes that they like to get rid of, but it's still in there. The E-rate money we received for some of our high-end expenditures, involvement expenditures, that is completely getting winded. That's federal, that's from the federal, that's federal money. But we still receive some reimbursement for our expenditures in those categories. We have expense reimbursements for the VHS program. We have some money there for VHS, for reimbursement expenditures, and for the Newburgh Elementary School. We share expenses with Newburgh. Now, other fees and revenues, there's an increase of fifty-nine thousand dollars. The fifty-nine thousand dollars is a breakdown of categories. It's, we received twenty thousand dollars from the town of Beezy for our services for superintendent and business office. We receive approximately ten thousand dollars of money for the business office, and we receive about thirteen thousand dollars for the services of the superintendent's office. So that's a revenue that we can use to offset expenditures in RSU twenty-two. We have, we think we're going to expand more on usage fees for our online classes for other school systems. So we put another sixty-two thousand dollars in that line. And then, we have been, because of the budget constraints, we've been negotiating with some of our contractors. SCER Bus Lines has dedicated a one-time rebate check for transportation services of about thirteen thousand eight seventy-five. And Hannywell has reimbursed about ten thousand dollars for offset expenditures. So our communicate with them has been favorable. The tuition is about thirty-three students for tuition. We're not anticipating less, but we're not anticipating more, so that's, I think that's a pretty conservative figure.
How much do you charge for student tuition?
The tuition is probably, I'd say about seventy-five hundred, eight thousand dollars. It's a, is it? What that is, is thirty-three students times eight thousand dollars. That's what that number represents. And then, so we have increased those categories by about forty thousand dollars. Now, the next line is fund balance, and I want to share, have a slide next slide shows, we'll go back and forth in the slides because sometimes people get confused by this number. So the finance committee met with our auditors, and that our audit has a fund balance right now as a six thirty fifteen, which is, we haven't got this to do, a one million and sixty-five. We, what was approved for fifteen sixty, three hundred and fourteen thousand thirty-five dollars. So if you go back to the slide, you can see that for fifteen fifteen that we're in right now was three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So now we have a remaining balance of eight hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. The finance committee, uh, has recommended to the board, the board approved, and we were listening to our municipal officials because they noted that they didn't want any expenditures for the McGrath Weatherby project and the sixteen seventeen budget. What they did is that they took fifty thousand dollars for the schematic design, took it on the unfunded, on the unassigned fund downs to pay for those expenditures. So now what we have available for sixteen seventeen, the budget we're talking about, is seven hundred ninety, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. So, we want to match what we put just the year sixteen. We added a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars towards offsetting, uh, the assessment of the three communities. We now are having a four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollar fund downs dedicated to the budget, which is approximately forty percent increase. So if you go back to the slide, you can see, for forty-nine, there's an increase of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, again, a forty percent increase. Now, what we have remaining, we dedicate that money, what we have remaining right now is three hundred sixty thousand dollars. We don't know what our fund balance will be on June thirty-sixteenth, because our fiscal year hasn't ended. So whatever happens here, we can add to this number, so that we can offset, hopefully in the future, this higher number. So it doesn't increase taxation. Is that?
I have a question, I mean, on a daily typical end of year, where does that number end up? And how does it, if, if you don't spend the money, that number will go up, obviously you've got a number of expenses.
Are you talking particularly sixteen, June thirtieth?
Yeah, where were you?
What are, what are we projecting?
Where were you at the start of the last budget? Was that number, and you obviously made it up to seven ninety-eight at the end of the year.
What was it you did?
It was in the three...
Three hundreds, I'd say, Jason? Much less. So, go ahead.
I mean, in the base period.
So some of what ended up in that fund balance, which is, we had, when the state changed the appropriation midterm, that money, because we were authorized to spend it, ended up when it going into that fund balance. So that was part of the increase of the fund balance.
Not yet, because that two fifty-five, the two hundred fifty-five thousand we received in July, can be part of this.
Okay. The two fifty-five from...
The money that we received in July from the state, the additional money that you can't spend, we can't, you can't spend that money.
Because we didn't authorize.
You haven't authorized, so it can be part of this piece, we hope.
Right, okay, yeah, okay.
You mean you hope?
Well, I mean, it's gonna be there, okay? It's gonna be there.
The only question would be, if other expenditures during the year went over budget to the part where...
And it did.
That money...
We, we added, we added two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars on positions this year. I have a, I hand out, uh, for you to take a look at, yes. But the two fifty-five technically didn't pay for the, for those positions, because you can't expend it.
Right.
We had to, we had to spend that out of our base budget for it.
Correct. Questions?
Can I get, go back, right?
Yeah.
I'm confused on other fees and revenue on the previous page.
Yeah?
It said in two thousand and sixteen it's zero, and this year it's fifty-nine eight seven five, and we said that's due.
That's all new monies. That, that's all new monies, uh, from like three-year averages and things of that nature, or so.
Okay, so where did, where did the BZ budget get them?
Right there. Right there.
But you mean prior years, Jason, you talked about this year?
Yeah, where did they go before?
We did, what we did is we used that revenue as a fund downs. We can dedicate to anything.
So now it's dedicated?
Now it's dedicated.
So you thought, the figures you had, and what we're dedicating here, not the actual revenue coming in?
So that's the actual revenue that's gonna be coming in, will be the twenty dollars for BZ. For that year.
So there was money in there this year, it's now just, that, BZ money is in a different place. It's all about BZ instead of contributing to the fund balance in a, in a particular line.
Yeah, I was just looking at, I thought BZ paid us a lot more than...
No, BZ pays us, uh, the contract with the superintendent's, uh, is about forty-five thousand. And I think the business office, I believe, is about forty-nine fifty-nine.
Forty-nine thousand, one forty-one. Yeah, that's why it's asking, we did fifty-nine thousand, we got twenty-five hundred sixty.
And you not dedicate to all?
No, 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 that's, I mean, there are expenditures. I mean, that's the ten thousand dollars for the business office, that's our, well, we could, that's revenue for, for our state RSU twenty-two. And, and I, I get five thousand dollars from BZ, he gets thirteen thousand dollars from BZ, and that's twenty-five thousand dollar contract. I can tell you, I...
But is that part of your salary, or is that above beyond weekly?
Above beyond.
Really?
Oh, we didn't have the payroll prior to this year also.
Payroll this year.
What's the difference, Eamonn, fifty-nine to the twenty-three? If twenty-three is BZ, what is, if it's the net expenditure, then, uh, BZ? Honeywell and others.
Honeywell and BZ.
I wrote that to the wrong...
Okay? So let's go to the local assessment piece.
Gonna, just one, on the next slide, I've got a question. On the, uh, fund balance, is that ten percent recommended, is that of the total budget, or of the local share of the budget?
Both.
So, that's unbelievably low.
Yes.
Well, how, how recently was the school, was the school ever at ten percent?
Never.
It was like nothing.
It was like nothing?
We're at one percent, yeah, we didn't cover it around one for every...
Is that not an indication that we're spending more than we should be?
No.
We're not taxing them.
We're actually working within a budget limit to a lot tighter margin than other districts, and other communities, and other states.
We don't save money like municipalities do. We don't have balance like, like municipalities.
You don't have the span of having to fund yourself before your money start rolling in, because yours starts rolling in.
We have never had that, ever.
But actually, I think that's quite an important point that Cindy made.
He doesn't need the fund balance, because their money runs in.
You know, just so everyone knows.
I also wonder, library on the summer pay for teachers that we did nine years ago, I wanna highlight that.
Yeah, I can't remember the number, but we approved, uh, summer teacher pay. So, in other words, if, if, let's say something would happen, that we would reorganize and join another school system, we are able to pay, this is the confusing piece, because our fiscal year is July one to June thirtieth. The contract for teachers is September one, August thirty-first. So therefore, in our budgets, we have to, uh, we have to approve, because they, because they don't work in the summer, so we have to approve those five weeks' summer pay. We have that money dedicated, so we could do that if something would happen. So, um, we're very fortunate to have that. Like, no, this is, we've always had this, we've always had this fund balance. Matter of fact, in nineteen ninety-five, when I was still on the board, we had a fund down, unassigned of sixteen hundred dollars.
I don't think anybody on the board thinks it will ever have ten percent. I mean, that's not a goal, that, that's what our auditors tell us. But nobody, we all realize that we're not gonna have that. Like, like Cindy just said, money's rolling in on a monthly basis. It is a little bit different, we know that we're not, we're never gonna need that ten percent. But it is what our auditors tell us, I've heard every time they come.
However, we have enough cash, so we don't have to borrow money anymore. We have enough cash on hand, not to borrow any money on a monthly basis, Eamonn.
This week I had the opportunity to visit my sister, who's in the finance committee for her community in Mass. And their, uh, unallocated fund balance for their school district, I think it's three and four, which was higher than it was in the past two or three. Something similar to that this week. I thought that was, like, very, it's, uh, quite a different demographic between ours.
So let's go back, um, so the local allocation right now is, um, the state is telling us we must raise eight million five hundred thousand, uh, it's called the mill expectation. They take the, uh, they take the valuation, we'll look at the valuation, they take the valuation of our four communities, and multiply it by eight point three percent, how eight point three mills? And that's the number that, uh, they're telling our four communities to raise for our schools. The non-state debt service is basically to end the DAPD project. We're back in September of two thousand eight, um, our taxpayers, uh, we, that they put six million dollars locally into our project, and that's what that amount is. And then, local about state participation is one point seven million, which is about five hundred one hundred thousand dollar increase in the previous year. You can see the total local share, about thirty million dollar budget, is, uh, the ten million seven eighty-nine to pay for a thirty million one thirty-two, is a pop, three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. Okay? Is that? All right, I'll slide it through that page.
Can, can I go back? Sorry.
Shares, I think, goes one point five from the local three point three, it's because of the...
Because of the state money, the state money, you're basically what it is. The one hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars we lost is basically one point seven percent local. So you think that's what it is, is one point seven percent local? And we bought a hundred thousand dollars for local.
Eamonn, excuse me, just, I'm still not seeing where the current activity in Augusta is reflected in these projections. The local share of that fifteen million?
Say again, I'm sorry, Dennis.
I'm, I don't know if it's had its final thrash, but we're hearing fifteen million coming statewide to education.
Yeah.
Does that show up anywhere, anywhere here?
Yes. We lost our, without the fifteen million, the number would have been three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars less money.
Okay.
But...
Two hundred plus five hundred thousand dollars, there's nothing to lose.
That's correct.
Right, but in terms of this page, in terms of this page eleven, when we started going over page eleven, it was stated at the beginning that, on the revenues portion, the variance where we're showing a variance of plus seventy-eight thousand dollars, that in reality, because of the way the numbers work, that variance should actually be negative one hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Correct. The reason why, Scott, you are correct. We have to show the approved amount of money statement that we thought we were gonna receive the eighteen million one ninety-one.
Right.
But we actually received eighteen million four forty-six.
So, I think, in Dennis's question, then, is, is getting at, in terms of what we were looking at on the slide, no, it actually isn't represented on the slide.
Yeah, you're right.
But it is taking, your, your answer is, but it is taken into account in the larger budgeting process.
You are correct.
So when we look at this number of a total local share increase of three point three eight percent, that actually does take into account the one hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars?
Loss.
Loss.
Correct.
Okay.
It does.
I think I understood what you were saying, Dennis.
Yeah. All set? All right, this is another, um, this is what we've been showing, class sharing, how, uh, funds are, not selling. All right. So, the main fact, uh, we go to, uh, I want to explain to you that this is, these numbers represent from ground zero up. This is what was asked. It came to a total of about one point two million dollar increase to the budget. Almost a sixty percent, sixteen percent local increase, and almost a six, it's about five or six percent gross increase. When we looked at everything that was asked for from zero up, we had one point one million dollar increase. We said, when I say leave, the ministry team, that we can't do that. We cannot have a one point one million dollar increase to the gross budget, almost five and a half percent. It would have been a sixteen percent local increase. That just would not be accepted. So, these were the original increases, and then we had to take some reductions to come out, what you see, close to what you see the five hundred eighty-two thousand dollar local, uh, five hundred eighty-two thousand dollar gross increase. That's basically how we came up with it. Is everybody all set with that? Okay. So, it's, can't be confused, because you're going, we're going from budget to budget. Because there was a lot of moving parts that have changed from budget to budget. So what we had, we had, uh, we did have a two hundred seventy-one thousand dollar increase for salaries. We have health insurance, insurance premium increase of two hundred eleven thousand dollars. Special ed personnel, we have an increase of four hundred sixteen thousand dollars in this budget, that's still in the budget. It's still in the budget. The additional, uh, one classroom teacher that we added this year is into next year. Core curricular stipends, uh, we added a point two guidance counts of McGrath. And then, net non-aidal line, uh, and what I have on your table, I have a significant breakdown of what these numbers mean. It has a little chicken scratch that says new on the top, on the right-hand corner. And that's where these numbers come from. They're identical to what this page shows. So, for example, um, you can see the special ed, uh, personnel. We have nine, we have nine additional effects in this budget that we didn't have before. Uh, we have half a teacher, point four OT, point four site, and a point two social worker. So I'm gonna switch it to our special ed department to show what these positions are. And you have, on your desk, you have, um, special ed, it shows the positions, and the explanations of why the positions are needed. So then, Munch, uh, go ahead and explain the positions.
Okay, is that right here?
Yeah.
So you should have two handouts, you should have also, um, something on the college education and community development, is that part here?
Yes, we do have that.
That is, gives an article in Gordon Johnson, I don't know if you know Gordon Johnson. We get an article based on the special ed and that, and the, um, cost associated with special education and how it's the fastest growing, the largest cost center per pupil spending in, I think, statewide. So this is not just an issue for our district, but it's an issue across the state. So, um, just a very quick read, but basically, um, statewide, we're looking at more special ed needs, more special ed programs, um, and the continuation of the state's magical funding of college, uh, state and federal government, not funded on this level. Just a little quick read. My handout is just talking points regarding the, um, the increase of what I'm asking for. My daddy kind of showing me what, uh, December two thousand thirteen, where I had four hundred and seventy students identified to, now we're at four hundred and fifty-five students. Um, we haven't really, we haven't really added a lot of staff to go along with that, probably some educational technicians, but other than that, we haven't increased this. So what I'm asking for for next year is, um, five special education teacher at Weatherby, um, looking at projected numbers at Weatherby. We will have about thirty-six to forty identified students just within the resource and sector, so I'm not talking about students who are in the self-compete program. And one point five special education teachers for that program, those two pro, that population, is really, um, it's, it's not enough with one point five teachers. That's, that makes it very difficult to provide the instruction. The students at that level also are, um, you know, love reading, writing, and math, delays, and so, um, by having just one and a half teachers, it's very difficult to, to, um, you know. Um, the other one is the OT, I'm asking for a point four, which is two days per week. And if you look, um, we will have approximately a hundred and thirty-four students who qualify for OT next year. Special education regulations indicate more than fifty students per OT. So right now I have two point two, which would indicate covers a hundred, a hundred and ten students. So if you see that I'm, we will be out of compliance next year, we do not have that service. Social work, kind of the same situation, I'm asking for a point two, um, which is one day a week. I currently have a, um, a social worker who works with us three days a week, so it's gonna be increasing, we can forget it, another day per week. But, right now we have seventy-four students, K through twelve that qualify. Again, special education regulations indicate fifty students for social work. We currently have one point six. We have approximately thirty-three students at the high school level, but the high school is a little bit different. We currently have one point six, we have approximately thirty-three students at the high school level, but the high school is a little bit different, where the guidance works primarily on the academic. The other schools' guidance covers some students with social needs. So, but again, you're looking at forty-one students K eight, and therefore to be in compliance and add another point two.
Would it be a total of one eighth of one eighth?
It would be total of one eighth. Psychological services, I'm asking for a point four, which is two days per week. Looking at the special education regulations, our timelines for when we need to complete evaluations, our forty-five school days. If you just take a look down below by my bullets, approximately twenty-three percent of our evaluations, our psychological evaluations were out of compliance this year. Because I just did not have enough people to be able to do evaluations. Now, the educational technician, those are, that's a little bit tricky. So we ended up with two students who moved to our district this past school year, requiring one-to-one services. So we have hired two additional ed techs, part of the budget. Those students will continue to be with us next year, therefore that should be still in the school. Three of the ed tech salaries were being paid for out of carryover money for local entitlement. So local entitlement and federal funding. The state had extra money in the past couple of years, and so what they did, they divided it, you know, almost the directors of the districts and the state. We knew that that money would eventually no longer be there, and this isn't there. So I'm currently paying for six ed tech at local entitlement, so therefore three ed techs will continue local entitlement, but the other two will have to be paid for in local. And then the other four ed techs we're asking for are, based on the fact, we have a student that is currently still attending RSU seventy-one, and that student, which is, student lives in Frankfurt, and that student will be with us next year, and that student has a one-to-one. We also have three students who are in preschool right now, we can even see the paperwork indicating that those students have a one-to-one this year. And I'd say at least, I get almost daily calls regarding more students coming to school. It's going to be very interesting and challenging in special ed.
So these students, like, do you think, because they come with a one-to-one, do we get extra money from the state, or is it still like eighty-four hundred plus that you get?
No, we don't get any extra.
Okay, so the better our special education department is, the more people to move here, the tougher it is for us to pay for it.
Absolutely.
And how many of these students, um, that we have in our special education programs are not from our district? Like, do we have any tuition students or?
We have some tuition students, not very many.
But it'd be the same thing, that they're eight grand and then they have one-to-one, so they pay for it?
If it's, if they require a one-to-one, we would charge them.
Gotcha, okay, so they're town?
We do not charge for speech, OT, special education services, but we would charge for...
Example, the first one is now RSU seventy-one, right?
Is there any benefit to hiring these as contracted positions as opposed to contracted now?
I have looked at some of that, and I'm not opposed to funding the in-qualified contractors, but definitely that's something that I would try.
And are we able to bill insurance for any of these services that were provided?
For main care. Of course, some of them, yes, we need to process that first, and some of them, yeah.
But to do that, of course, a lot of them is true.
It does.
Will you, can you factor in anticipation of that revenue? So what you're asking for isn't the total cost? I may have not asked in that way, but if we know we can get a main care reimbursement, we know that's going to cover some of the costs. So what we see here isn't necessarily the total cost, knowing we're going to get some reimbursement? Do you get what I'm saying?
I do. The, we're not sure exactly, I mean, there's also seed money, and I don't want to explain what seed money is, but it's money you have to really pay back to the state from the money that you presented from main care. So we haven't, we haven't really seen that first amount yet, so I'm not, I'm not really sure exactly how much money we'll get. Probably by the end of the school year, and Dennis and I will know more about how much money that we'll be getting. That would be helpful for us with our future budgets. But I, I'm not anticipating that we're going to get a lot.
So this reflects what you mean, this is Edgewood, you're reflecting what your real needs are right now with the special education students.
So what's going to be the impact of, like, see that there are three positions, or two, two positions asked for that were, apparently needed to be cut? What's going to be the impact of not having those positions on the paper here?
I'm going to try to restructure what I currently have, trying to do. What's going to be the impact, you know, right?
So, so instead of us providing, so instead of us providing you with the resources that you need to do your job, we're asking you to do the job that the resources will give you? Okay? We appreciate it.
Thank you Lynn. Any other questions?
Quick question on the reduction category, for textbooks and supplies, the curriculum textbooks, about sixty-four thousand dollars appears to be mostly sixty, called grade cohort, so fifty-three dollars to, what, what is that really about? Is it more instruction is digital, or is it, why is that? It will be reduced by the... There's reduction in supply textbooks, thirty-three five, curriculum.
Yeah, we're detailed.
Detailed.
Yeah, we care.
Well, it's actually detailed, the bottom two lines in that.
Yep. So we'll have reduction in supplies, thirty-three five, that will be...
Fifteen five.
Fifteen five from Hammond Academy, and fifteen from Wagner and Reach Brooks, so I'm going to have, first I'll go with, Richard Nungary's having a group in Alabama, so he's not here. Ricky, can you go with the, the supplies and...
That's what I'm going to do, excuse them, give them to your left. He'd rather do that than be your left, please.
So at the middle schools, we have instructional supply lines, and we also have equipment lines. And you can imagine that with instructional supplies, we can predict quite well what most needs would be around the typical traditional supply you think. But what we have noticed over the past couple of years is that as we move to curriculum choices where you have more online features, we can get a bit more streamlined about how we're buying actual paper supplies. And so this cut really reflects Mr. Blencroft and I getting together and saying, where do we think we can collapse some of our supply lines next year and try this thing? And we're going to adopt a new math curriculum most likely, and we're looking at one that has a heavy online component. We will have a workbook component too, but we think we can work with that. It will be lean, believe me. And I don't think anyone will be told they don't have paper by May or something radical, but it'll be a shift.
An eighteen-five from the high school?
We actually are looking into some of the same circumstances, trying to replenish supplies where they're depleted, but trying to talk with our departments about cyclically replenishing supplies or new textbooks, if you will, and then also discussing potential options down the road with, with more online presence. We've got the technology to support it here.
Just, just from a practical standpoint, the online is effective when the household has access. I assume that's more common today than ever has been, but is there a danger that if internet access is not available, can it be brought home?
Yeah.
Or do we really have to be at the school when the internet access is more?
And we've done a lot of work with Google Drive, our tech stocks have helped out a lot with infrastructure of technology and instruction. One of the things that we're trying to be really cognizant of here though is socioeconomics, and making sure that that's not a line of demarcation for learning for our kids when technology's involved. So we'll be really aware of that as we move forward.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. You see that the marking label is on, is on the expenditure reduction, but I'm not saying I know that we're paying extra for administrative support for our evaluation program. Is, is that in there somewhere, or?
Yeah, that's correct.
So add and support income.
Okay, so we're only spending sixteen thousand on that, so it's like, it's here.
Yeah.
And with the follow-up on the... Wait, can I go?
For reimbursed by expenditures, and for the Newburgh Elementary School, we share expenses with Newburgh. Now, other fees and revenues, there's an increase of fifty-nine thousand dollars. The fifty-nine thousand dollars is a breakdown of categories. It's, we received twenty thousand dollars from the town of Ezy for our services for superintendent and business office. We receive approximately ten thousand dollars of money for the business office, and we receive about thirteen thousand dollars for the services of the superintendent's office. So that's a revenue that we can use to offset expenditures in RSU twenty-two. We have, we think we're going to expand more on usage fees for our online classes for other school systems, so we put another sixty-two thousand dollars in that line. And then, we have been, because of the budget constraints, we've been negotiating with some of our contractors. Sierra Bus Lines has dedicated a one-time rebate check for transportation services of about thirteen thousand eight seventy-five. And Hannywell has reimbursed about ten thousand dollars, offset expenditures. So our communicate with them has been favorable. The tuition is about thirty-three students, for tuition. We're not anticipating less, but we're not anticipating more, so that's, I think that's a pretty conservative figure.
And what do you charge for students for tuition?
The tuition is probably, I'd say about seventy-five hundred to eight thousand dollars. It's a, it's a... Is it? What that is, is thirty-three students times eight thousand dollars, that's what that number represents. And then, so we have increased those categories by about forty-eight thousand dollars. Now, the next line is fund balance, and I want to share, have a slide next, slide shows, we're going to go back and forth in the slides, because sometimes people get confused by this number. So, the finance committee met with our writers, and that our audit has a fund balance right now as of six thirty fifteen, which is at the end of our fiscal year, of one million and sixty-five. We, what was approved for fifteen sixteen is three hundred and fourteen thousand thirty-five dollars. So if you go back to the slide, you can see that for fifteen fifteen, that we're in right now, was three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So now we have a main balance of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The finance committee has recommended to board, the board approved, and we were listening to our municipal officials because they noted that they didn't want any expenditures for the McGrath Wethely project and the sixteen seventeen budget. What they did is that they took fifty thousand dollars for the schematic design, took it on the unfunded, on the unassigned fund balance to pay for those expenditures. So now what we have available for sixteen seventeen, the budget we're talking about, is seven hundred and ninety, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So, we want to match what we put in fiscal year sixteen, we added one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards offsetting the assessment to the three communities. We now are having a four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar fund balance dedicated to the budget, which is approximately forty percent increase. So if you go back to the slide, you can see it's a four thirty-nine, there's an increase of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, again, forty percent increase. Now, what we have remaining, we dedicate that money, what we have remaining right now is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We don't know what our fund balance will be on June thirty sixteen, because our fiscal year hasn't ended. So whatever happens here, we can add to this number, so that we can offset, hopefully in the future, this higher number. So it doesn't increase taxation. Seth?
Question, I mean, on a day typical in the year, where does that number end up, and how does it, if you don't spend the money, that number will go up, obviously that means the next...
Are you talking fiscal year sixteen, June thirtieth?
Yeah, where were you?
What are, what are we projecting?
Where were you at the start of the last budget, was that number, and you obviously made it up at seven ninety-eight at the end of the year, what was it at the beginning? It was in the three...
Three hundreds, I'd say you, Jason? Much less. So, go ahead.
Pretty, I mean, it is pretty...
So some of what ended up in that fund balance is we had, the state changed the appropriation midterm. That money, because we were authorized to spend it, ended up going into that fund balance, so that was part of the increase of the fund balance.
Not yet, because that two fifty-five, the two hundred fifty-five thousand is to receive in July, can be part of this.
Okay. The two fifty-five from...
The money that we receive in July from the state, the additional money that you can't spend, you can't, you can't spend that money.
Because we didn't authorize.
You haven't authorized, so it can be part of this piece, we hope.
Right, okay, yeah, okay.
You mean you hope.
Well, I mean, it's going to be there, okay? It's going to be there.
The only question, if, if other expenditures during the year went over budgeted, where?
And it did.
That money was...
We, we added, we added two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars of positions this year. I have a handout for you to take a look at, yes. But the two fifty-five technically didn't pay for that, for those positions, because you can't spend it.
Right.
We had, we've had to spend that out of our base budget for the...
Correct. Questions?
Can I get a go-back card?
Yeah.
I'm confused on other fees and revenue amount of previous page.
Yeah.
Thinking two thousand and sixteen was zero, and this year's fifty-nine eight seven five, what's it out of the...
That's all new monies, that, that's all new monies from like three-year averages and things of that nature, over the years.
Okay, so where did, where did the BZ project get ended?
Right there. Right there.
But you mean prior years, Jason, you talked about this year?
Yeah, where did they before?
We did, what we did is we used that revenue as a fund balance. We can dedicate to anything.
So now it's dedicated?
Now it's dedicated.
So you thought, the figures you had, and what we're dedicating here, not the actual revenue coming in?
No, that's the actual revenue that's going to be coming in, will be the twenty dollars from Ezy. For that year.
So there was money in there this year, it's now just in that, Ezy money is in a different place, it's called out here instead of contributing to the fund balance in a, in a particular line.
Yeah, I was just looking at, I thought Ezy paid us a lot on that.
No, Ezy pays us the contract for super camps, and it's about forty-five thousand. And I think the business office, I believe, is about forty-nine fifty-nine, I think.
Forty-nine thousand, one forty-one, yeah, that's why it's actually, we get fifty-nine thousand, we get twenty-five and sixty.
And you're not dedicating to...
That was a higher...
No, 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 that's, I mean, there are expenditures. I mean, that's the ten thousand dollars for the business office, that's our, what we could, that's revenue for our state RSU twenty-two. And, and I, I get five thousand dollars from Ezy, he gets thirteen thousand dollars from Ezy, and that's a twenty-five thousand dollar contract. I can tell you, I...
But is that part of your salary, is that above beyond the weekly?
Above beyond.
Really?
But we didn't have the payroll prior to this year, or?
Payroll this year.
What's the difference, you know, fifty-nine to the twenty-three? If twenty-three is Ezy, what is, if it's the next expenditure, then the, the... Honeywell and...
Honeywell and...
I wrote that to the wrong...
Okay? So let's go to the local assessment piece.
Kind of, just one, on the next slide, I've got a question. On the fund balance, is that ten percent recommended, is that of the total budget or of the local share of the budget?
Total.
So, that's unbelievably low.
Yes.
How, how recently was the school, was the school ever at ten percent?
Never.
It was at nothing.
Was it nothing?
We're at one percent, yeah, we've been hovering around one forever, haven't we?
Is that not an indication that we're spending more than we should be?
No. No.
We're not taxing enough.
We're actually working within a budget limit to a tighter margin than other districts and other communities in other states.
We don't save money like municipalities do. We don't have balance like, like municipalities.
You don't have the span of having to fund yourself before your money start rolling in because yours starts rolling in.
But we have never had that, ever.
But actually, I think that's quite an important point that Cindy made.
He doesn't need the fund balance because their money runs in.
You know, just so everyone knows.
I also wanted a library on the summer pay for teachers that we did nine years ago, I want to have like that.
Yeah, I can't remember the number, but we approved our summer teacher pay. So, in other words, if, if, let's say something would happen, we would reorganize and join another school system. We are able to pay, this is the confusing piece because our fiscal year is July one to June thirtieth. The contract for teachers is September one, August thirty-first. So therefore, in our budgets, we have to, uh, we have to approve because they, because they don't work in the summer. So we have to approve those five weeks' summer pay. We have that money dedicated, so we could do that if something would happen. So, um, we're very fortunate to have that. But no, this is, we've always had this, we've always had this fund balance. In nineteen ninety-five, Mark was still on the board, we had a fund down, unassigned of sixteen hundred dollars.
I don't think anybody on the board thinks it will ever have ten percent. I mean, that's not a goal, that, that's what our auditors tell us. But nobody, we all realize that we're not going to have that. I mean, like, like Cindy just said, money's rolling in on a monthly basis. It is a little bit different, we know that we're not, we're never going to need that kind of thing. But it is what our auditors tell us, I've heard every time they come.
However, we have enough cash so we don't have to borrow money anymore. We have enough cash on hand not to borrow any money on a monthly basis anymore.
This weekend I had the opportunity to visit my sister who's on the finance committee for her community in Mass. And their unallocated fund balance for their school district, I think it's three and four, which was higher than what it was in the past two or three. Something similar to that this weekend.
So let's go back, um, so the local allocation right now is, uh, the state is telling us we must raise eight million five hundred thousand. Uh, it's called the milititation, they take the, uh, they take the valuation, we'll look at the valuation, they take the valuation of our four communities, they multiply by eight point three percent, how eight point three mills? And that's the number that, uh, they're telling our four communities to raise for our schools. The non-state debt service is basically the end of the GATT project. We, back in September of two thousand and eight, uh, our taxpayers, uh, agreed that they would put six million dollars locally into our project. And that's what that amount is. And then, the local without state participation is one point seven million, which is about five hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase. Uh, in the previous year, you can see the total local share of our thirty million dollar budget is, uh, the ten million seven eighty-nine to pay for a thirty million one thirty-two, is a pop, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Okay? Seth? All right, let me get through that page.
Can I go back? Sorry.
The state shares the total student numbers, one point nine from the local, because of the...
Because of the state money, the state money, that's basically what it is. The one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars we lost is basically one point seven percent local. So you think that's what it is, one point seven percent local, because it's about a hundred thousand dollars for local.
Amy, excuse me, just, I'm still not seeing where the current activity in Augusta is reflected in these projections. The local share of that fifteen million?
Go ahead, say it again, I'm sorry Dennis.
I'm, I don't know if it's had its final thrash, but we're hearing fifteen million coming statewide to education.
Yeah.
Does that show up anywhere, anywhere here?
Yes, we lost our, without the fifteen million, the number would have been three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less money.
Okay.
You were supposed to add another thousand dollars, maybe?
That's correct.
Right, but in terms of this page, in terms of this page eleven, when we started going over page eleven, it was stated at the beginning that, on the revenues portion, the variance where we're showing a variance of plus seventy-eight thousand dollars, that in reality, because of the way the numbers work, that variance should actually be negative one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Correct, the reason why, Scott, you are correct. We have to show the approved amount of money statement that we thought we were going to receive the eighteen million one ninety-one.
Right.
But we actually received eighteen million four forty-six.
So, I think in Dennis's question then is, is getting at, in terms of what we were looking on the slide, no, it actually isn't represented on the slide.
Yeah, you're right.
But it is taking, your, your answer is, but it is taken into account in the larger budgeting process.
You are correct.
So when we look at this number of a total local share increase of three point three eight percent, that actually does take into account the one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars?
Lost.
Lost.
Correct. It does.
I think I understood what you were saying, Dennis.
Yeah.
Seth? All right, this is another, uh, this is the initial cost sharing coming up for how, uh, funds are, not showing. All right, so, the main fact, uh, we go to, uh, I want to explain to you that this is, these numbers represent from ground zero up. This is what was asked. It came to a total of about one point two million dollar increase to the budget. Almost a sixty percent, sixteen percent local increase, and almost a six, it's about five or six percent gross increase. When we looked at everything that was asked for from zero up, we had one point one million dollar increase. We said, when I say leave, the administrative team, that we can't do that. We cannot have a one point one million dollar increase to the gross budget, almost five and a half percent. There would have been a sixteen percent local increase. That just would not be accepted. So, these were the original increases, and then we had to take some reductions to come out what you see, close to what you see the five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar local, uh, five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar gross increase. That's basically how we came up with it. Is everybody all set with that? Okay, so, it's, can't be confused because you go on, we're going from budget to budget. Because there was a lot of moving parts that have changed from budget to budget. So what we had, we had, uh, we did have a two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar increase for salaries. We have health insurance, insurance fee increase of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Uh, special ed personnel, we have an increase of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in this budget. That's still in the budget, still in the budget. Uh, the additional, uh, one classroom teacher that we added this year is into next year. Uh, four curriculum stipends, uh, we added a point two guidance council at McGrath. And then, net non-aided old lines, uh, and what I have on your table, I have a significant breakdown of what these numbers mean. It has a little chicken's practice is new on the top, on the right-hand corner. And that's where these numbers come from. They're identical to what this page shows. So, for example, uh, you can see the special ed, uh, personnel. We have nine, we have nine additional ed techs in this budget that we didn't have four. Uh, we have habit teacher, point four OT, point four site, and a point two social worker. So I'm going to switch it to our special ed department to show what these positions are. And you have on your desk, you have, uh, special ed, it shows the positions and the explanations of why the positions are needed. So then, Munch, go ahead and explain the positions.
Okay, is it right here?
Yeah.
So you should have two handouts, you should have also, um, something on the college of education and human development, is that right here?
Yes, we do have that.
That is just an article on Board of Watson, on how to develop Board of Watson. We did an article based on the special ed and that, and from the cost associated with special education and how it's the fastest growing, the largest cost center per pupil spending statewide. So this is not just an issue for our district, but it's an issue across the state. So, um, it's just a very quick read, but basically, um, statewide, we're looking at more special ed needs, more special ed programs, um, and the continuation of the state's natural funding of colleges, of state and federal, not fund on the local. Just a little quick read. My handout is just talking points regarding the, um, the increase of what I'm asking for. My Andy, kind of showing you what the December two thousand and thirteen, where I had four hundred and seven students identified to, now we're at four hundred and fifty-five students. Um, we haven't really, we haven't really added a lot of staff to go along with that, probably some educational technicians, but other than that, we have increases there. Uh, so what I'm advocating for, for next year is, um, five special education teachers at Wetherby, um, looking at projected numbers at Wetherby. We will have about thirty-six to forty identified students just within the resource and the setting. So I'm not talking about students who are in the self-compete program. And one point five special education teachers for that program, those two pro, that population is really, um, it's, it's not enough with one point five teachers. That's, that makes it very difficult to evolve the instruction. The students at that level also are, um, you know, a lot of reading, writing, and math delays. And so, um, by having just one and a half teachers, it's very difficult to meet the needs. Um, the other one is the OT, I'm asking for a point four, which is two days per week. And if you look, uh, we look at approximately a hundred and thirty-four students who qualify for OT next year. Um, special education regulations indicate more than fifty students per OT. So right now I have two point two, which would indicate covers a hundred, a hundred and ten students. So if you see that I'm, we will be out of compliance next year, we do not have that service. Social work, kind of the same situation, we, I'm asking for a point two, um, which is one day a week. I currently have a, um, a social worker who works with us three days a week, so it could be increasing, we can bring in another day per week. But right now we have seventy-four students, K through twelve are qualified. Um, again, special education regulations indicate fifty students for social worker. Uh, we currently have one point six, we have approximately thirty-three students at the high school level. The high school is a little bit different, where the guidance works primarily on academicity. The other schools drive, covers some students with social needs. So, um, but again, you're looking at, at forty-one students K eight, and therefore to be in compliance and, uh, we'll come to...
Would it be a total of one eighth of one?
Would be total of one eighth, correct. Um, psychological services, or I, I'm asking for a point four, which is two days per week. Um, looking at the special education regulations, our timelines for when we need to complete evaluations are forty-five school days. Um, if you just take a look down below by my bullets, approximately twenty-three percent of our evaluations, our psychological evaluations were out of compliance this year, because I just did not have enough people to be able to do evaluations. Now, the educational technicians, those are, that's a little bit tricky. So we ended up with two students who moved to our district this past school year, um, requiring one-to-one services. So we had to hire two additional ed techs, part of the check. Those students will continue to be with us next year, therefore that's that, should be still in the school. Three of the ed tech salaries were being paid for, uh, carryover money for local entitlement. So, uh, local entitlement is federal funding. The state had extra money in the past couple of years. And so what they did is they divided it, you know, almost as the directors of the districts in the state. Uh, we knew that that money would eventually no longer be there, and this is the year. So, um, I'm currently paying for six ed techs at a local entitlement, so therefore three ed techs will continue local entitlement, but the other two will have to be paid for in local. And then the other four ed techs are being asked for, uh, based on the fact that we have a student that is currently still attending RSU seventy-one, and that student, just student lives in Frankfurt, and that student will be with us next year, and that student has a one-to-one. We also have, um, three students who are in preschool right now, um, who can receive the paperwork indicating that those students have, have a one-to-one this year. And I'd say at least, um, I get almost daily calls regarding lost students coming to school. It's going to be very interesting and challenging in special education.
So these students, like, do you get, because they come with a one-to-one, do we get extra money from the state? Or is it still like the eight or four hundred five that you get?
No, we don't get that much.
Okay, so the better our special education department is, the more people that move here to cover it, and press the paper.
Absolutely.
And how many of these students, um, that we have in our special education streams are not from our district? Like, do we have any tuition students or...
We have some tuition students, um, not very many.
But it'd be the same thing that either pay grand and then pay a one-to-one or something, pay for...
If it's, if they require one-to-one, we will charge them.
Gotcha, okay, so they're in town.
We do not charge for, um, speech, OT, um, special education services, but we would charge for...
Example, the first one is now, you know, RSU seventy-one, right?
Is there any benefit to hiring these as contracted physicians as opposed to contracting now?
I have looked at some of that, and I'm not opposed to finding good and qualified contractors, but definitely that's other than that.
And are we able to bill insurance for any of these services that we're providing?
Uh, for main care, of course, some of them, yes, we, we have a process up just starting to receive some money.
But to do that, of course, a lot of it is true.
It does.
When you, can you factor in anticipation of that revenue? So what you're asking for isn't the total cost? I mean, I'm not asking that well, but if we know we can get a main care reimbursement, we know that's going to cover some of the costs. So what we see here isn't necessarily the total cost, knowing we're going to get some reimbursement? Do you get what I'm saying?
I do. We're not sure exactly, I mean, there's also seed money, and I, I don't want to explain what seed money is, but it's money you have to really pay back to the state from the money that you presented for main care. So we haven't, we haven't really seen that first amount yet, so I'm not, I'm not really sure exactly how much money we'll get. Probably by the end of the school year, Dan, Cassie, and I will know more about how much money that we'll see again. And, um, that would be helpful for us with our future budgets. But I, I'm not anticipating that we're going to get a lot, a lot.
So this reflects what you need, this is a page where you're reflecting what your real needs are right now with the special education students.
So what's going to be the impact of, I see that there are three positions, or two, two positions asked for that were apparently needed to be cut. What's going to be the impact of not having those positions on the paper?
I'm going to try to restructure what I currently have, trying to do what's going to be the type of need I...
Okay, so, so instead of us providing, so instead of us providing you with the resources that you need to do your job, we're asking you to do the job with the resources we'll give you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions?
Um, just a quick question on the, uh, reduction category, um, for textbook and supply, for curriculum textbooks... For textbook and supplies, for curriculum textbooks, about sixty-four thousand dollars appears to be mostly a sixty, twelve-grade cohort, so fifty-three dollars, what, what does that really about to, is it more instruction is digital, or is it, why is that able to be reduced by that? There's production in supplying textbooks, thirty-three five, or curriculum?
Yeah, more detailed.
More detailed.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually right there, the bottom two lines in that.
Yep. So we'll have reduction supply to thirty-five, that will be-
Sixteen five.
Fifteen five from Hannah Gaddy, and fifteen from Wagner and Rich Brooks, so I'm gonna have, first I'll go with, Richard's not here, he's having a loop in our balance, so he's not here. Ricky, can you go with the, the supplies and?
That's what the only excuse I would give out of being here last night.
He'd rather do that.
He'd rather do that than be here last week.
So at the middle schools, we have instructional supply lines, and we also have equipment lines, and you can imagine that with instructional supplies, we can predict quite well what most needs would be around the typical traditional supply you think. But what we have noticed over the past couple of years is that as we move to curriculum choices where you have more online features, we can get a bit more streamlined about how we're buying actual paper supplies, and so this cut really reflects Mr. Blencroft and I getting together and saying, where do we think we can collect some of our supply lines next year and try this thing? And we're going to adopt a new math curriculum most likely, and we're looking at one that has a heavy online component. We will have a workbook component too, but we think we can work with that. It will be lean, believe me, and I don't think anyone will be told they don't have paper by May or something radical, but it'll be a ship.
And eighteen five from the high school?
We actually are looking into some of the same circumstances, trying to replenish supplies where they're depleted, but trying to talk with our departments about cyclically replenishing supplies or new textbooks, if you will, and then also discussing potential options down the road with, with more online presence. We've got the technology to support it here.
Just, just from a practical standpoint, the online is affected when the household has access, and I assume that's more common today than it has been, but is there a danger that if internet access is not available, can it be brought home?
Yeah.
Or do they have to be at the school in order to access that?
And we've done a lot of work with Google Drive, our tech stocks have helped out a lot with infrastructure of technology and instruction. One of the things that we're trying to be really cognizant of here though is socioeconomics and making sure that that's not a line of demarcation for learning for our kids when technology's involved, so we'll be really aware of that as we move forward.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I see that the marking label is on, is on the expenditure reduction, but I'm not saying I know that we're paying extra for administrative support for our evaluation program. Is, is that in there somewhere, or?
Yeah, that's correct.
So add support and.
Okay, so we're only spending sixteen thousand on that, it's like, this year.
Yeah.
And with the follow-up on Rob, like, can you-